Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education Forum. Welcome all candidates. Thank you for running. And to our audience members, thank you for being here. I just want to make one housekeeping note. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silence or turn it off. So just to explain the format for tonight, the table placement of the candidates has been randomly determined prior to the forum. A separate question, well, we're going to start off with two general questions that are league questions, or actually the Parent Teacher Organization Council PTAC questions. Each candidate will answer these two questions. And in a random drawing, the third table will start. Once we've gone through these two first questions that every candidate will get to answer, we'll move to audience questions. So if you have a question, you can raise your hand. You can see there are ushers that will provide you with cards and pencils and take them to the back. We have a table of screeners who are going to make sure that the questions are nonpartisan and eligible for this forum. And so then they'll bring them up to me and I will move to audience questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. We have timers in the front row who will give them a 30-second mark, I think, and a final. There is no opening statement, so we'll go right into questions to start, but there will be a closing statement of two minutes, or one minute, one-minute closing. After a candidate's table has answered a question, each of you have four 30-second rebuttals or comments, which you can use to weigh in on the question if you'd like to participate on a question that your table has not been asked. So in that way, everyone gets a chance to weigh in on all the topics that are asked. So with that, we just ask if you are writing questions for the screeners that you write And then at 8:25, we will end the questions and then we will have the closing statements. So starting with table number three. Is that us? This is three, yes. So table number one is the far right, am I right? And middle table is two, and table number three is here. So we'll start with table number three. We'll go to table number one, then table number two, in that order. Starting with Mrs. Lamieux, the first question, which is prepared by the Parent Teacher Council. What do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help to address it as a Board of Ed member?
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I have actually three co-important issues that I think are the most important ones that need to be addressed, but I will start with the one that I am leaning towards as being the most important, which is increasing opportunities for students at all levels to have hands-on, multi-gomain, project-based learning. I think that over the past few years, Norwalk Public Schools under the leadership of the current board has made tremendous progress in closing the achievement gap. And I think that there has been a lot of success improving the basics, improving reading instruction and mathematics instruction. And I think now is the time for us to really enrich and go in depth and give students the opportunity to really, oh, grow their brains. Grow their brains by doing project-based work, which is important for a number of reasons, not least of which is future college and career opportunities. I have lots of personal career experience creating, you know, hands-on, project-based learning for children. I've taught early childhood, I've taught music, I've taught arts special education, and in all of those things, project-based arts-enriched learning has been the thing to do. I have 30 seconds. So, yeah, I think enriching, enriching what we're doing by using project learning is a really, really big thing, and it will make our district and all of our schools, the perception of our district and our schools also, much more attractive to the broader community and people who we want to see coming to Norwalk and give more opportunities to all our children. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamieux. Mr. Donahue, same question. What do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help address it as a BOE member?
Well, first of all, thank you for having us this evening and all the candidates. Welcome. Good to see you again. My, I think the most important thing right now is our academics. How do we take and use the academic curriculum that we have within the, within our school system to address the needs of all children? And how do we spread that around and we advance them and make them smarter, or help promote the kids who can be promoted with our academics and the reading and math? And how do we address the kids who need that help? But we have to have that balance. We can't just take one group of kids and make them the focus. We have to focus on all children. And one of the reasons and the ways that I would like to do that is through the infrastructure that we have. I'm a technology guy. My wife is an elementary school teacher, a middle school teacher, and a Montessori teacher in Connecticut, and certified in Connecticut, I should say. And what I'd like to do is try to find a way to use the companies that we have in town to help promote and increase the infrastructure, whether it be technology, communications, iPads, computers, whatever we have to do, because we have schools that cannot function with the technology of today. We have schools that are inadequate, inadequately able to address those needs. And I think that the companies that we have in town, we could certainly use. Thank you. I think Sarah and I were talking before, you know, the technology could address the needs that Sarah's talking about. And if we balance those two things together, then we enrich our students and then further down the road, we will draw in more families, which will certainly increase our tax base and keep our students learning.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Ms. Mosby, the same question. What do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help address it as a BOE member?
Okay, at this time, I've seen incredible increases during our time on the board. And if we had to address something, it would probably be giving more support to what we're working on. And I believe that with that in hand, we could increase collaborative styles, working with people, partnering with people, and working with the staff. And we need to concentrate and focus on, I agree with the, the technology part, because we need to definitely increase that part, because some of our kids have Chromebooks, and we need to make sure that we have other devices, as well as Chromebooks, for all children to receive that for learning. And then as far as the curriculum, I believe that we should give more support towards that area, since that is one of the biggest driver with the strategic operating plan, and we need to give more support with that, with the Tier One and Tier Two, Tier Three interventions. So collaborative style, working more and pushing is something that I think that we need to concentrate and stay focused on in order to move it to the next level.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Mr. DiMilio, what do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help address it as a BOE member?
So I've been looking at this for a while, and I think, you know, we spend two, our annual budget is approximately $200 million, and that money goes to various things. And I looked at the budget, and my, I grew up here, went to middle school, high school, elementary school here. And I don't want to give you the canned phrase of, "Oh, I'm a business guy." I don't think the fact that I'm a business person will help me address the biggest issue, which is our finances. How do we spend this $200 million? I'm an entrepreneur, okay? And what I do every day, and I was talking with a gentleman in the audience, and we talked about efficiency. Are we running this Board of Education efficiently? Because $200 million seems like a lot of money, and I don't want taxes raised, but how do we become more efficient? My business and the way I run things every day, there's a lot of people, and we know, who are corporate executives that get into politics, but they have huge budgets and they work for Fortune 500 companies. That's not me. Every dollar I spend in my business is important. And that being said, in some instances, we may have to spend more money to help the situation, right? We're not always about cutting. People say Republicans are about being fiscally conservative. I'm not fiscally conservative. I'm fiscally efficient, and that's what I want to do with this $200 million. And I want to find out ways to better serve, better serve the board and better serve the students and the residents of Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMilio. Ms. Meyer Mitchell, same question. What do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help address it as a BOE member?
Thank you so much. I am very concerned about our academics, and that is the most important issue, so I agree with Tom. I believe that we need to meet all kids wherever they are, whether they be facing challenges, whether they're coming in with English as a second language, or special education, or whether they're gifted and they need extra enrichment. I also think that the middle of the, the middle of the student pack right now is not challenged as much as it could be, and I think we can do better. I believe in rigor in all subjects. We currently are focusing a lot on ELA and math, which I think is very exciting. We've closed a third of the achievement gap in those areas. However, communities around us are also focusing on science and social studies, and we currently do not have a science or social studies curriculum coordinator, and we have outdated textbooks. We're not doing experiments in the school. So I'm a very strong proponent of hands-on science, and I'd like to help coordinate moving that forward. So basically, I believe, I come from a long line of academics, and I believe I bring that lens, that perspective, to this issue. And I would, if elected, I would really enjoy serving on the Curriculum Committee and digging into how we approach learning in Norwalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. Mr. Cullen, same question. What do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help address it as a BOE member?
Well, I'm a, I'm non-alumnus, so of the local school system, so my bent is to try to add a little outside perspective to this thing. And I suppose quality of instruction and take a look at the structure of the school system, at the structure of the state school system, because that's what, that's what local members of the Board of Education are. They're locally selected extensions of the state Board of Education. That's what our, that's what our real position is. And I think that nobody, and especially, you know, the people who are not summer soldiers and sunshine patriots who came out tonight to listen to us talk, got to be, have to be aware that this thing is a, virtually an education monopoly run by the state. I have an interest in greater diversification, and I think that parents getting organized and putting a little pressure on the state legislature, for example, to list, lift the cap on charter schools is one way to get that diversification, because as our economic turnaround continues, there's going to be a broad array of careers and jobs that are not careers, but a variety of jobs, that's going to be much broader than it, than it has been in the recent past. And the schools have to be preparing kids to take these, take these jobs and go into these careers that'll hopefully be better paying, so that they can afford to stay here, buy a house, and prosper, be free and prosper. That's the theme.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Kimmel, what do you regard as the most important issue facing Norwalk Public Schools at this time, and how can you help address it as a BOE member?
Well, I think the most important issue facing all public schools, private schools also for that matter, is academic achievement. But that's kind of a general term, which everybody can endorse. More specifically, I know that the board is right now involved with discussions with the Norwalk Federation of Teachers to increase the school day by 30 minutes. I think that's critically important. If you do the simple math over an elementary school career that includes kindergarten, that comes out after six years with a six-hour school day to 90 additional days. That's a half a school year. That's a very big deal, and I hope we can move in that direction soon enough. I believe that the district must find a better way to coordinate with the preschools that are all over the city. I read some data indicating a few years ago, about 90% of the kindergarten kids that came into the Norwalk schools had some preschooling, yet only about 40% are already for kindergarten. So we've got to make sure that the preschools in the city, however we do that, I'm not sure, but we've got to find a way to make sure they understand what the expectations are for when kids enter kindergarten. Thirdly, I am very pleased that two years ago, we began to implement Tier Two academic interventions, remedial interventions across the district. I support that. I want to, I want to make sure we expand into Tier Three interventions. That's interventions that help students who are behind that are not doing regular school hours in the summer after school. But I think if we're ever going to really close the achievement gap and raise overall academic achievement, that's key. And finally, we've got to increase the graduation requirements for the high school. Right now, it's at the minimum or near the minimum, 20 credits or 20 courses enables a student to graduate. That does not prepare those students for the SATs, for college. It provides too much time for study holes. We've got to increase that to 26 credits. Overall, that's just four issues, I think, that relate to academic achievement, that I think if we can address sooner rather than later, will make a dent in, will make a further dent in the achievement gap, and we'll be very proud of our school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. So now, starting with table one, with Ms. Mosby. This is a more focused question, a little bit similar to this first question, but we want to gauge, what is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
My top priority would be working with the Special Ed Department. Although we hired a director in September, and we were implementing a new Special Ed redesign program, I believe that we need to work closely with that group, just to ensure that everything is being implemented and that the, all of the initiatives that we want to bring to the redesign program is being put in place. Although we've made some strides, strides in that area, there's still a lot of, you know, areas, there's still a lot of items or issues that we need to try to address. And that would be my number one, would be Special Ed. As, as I said before, I would like to support the curriculum area with the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three interventions, and that would be something that I would, because that will tie in, tie in into academics learning. At this time, we have a superintendent that has put together a plan, a strategic operating plan. We have 25 goals and 10 priority outcomes, and I believe that if we stay on course and tweak it, if we have to some, that we should be okay. It has, it has come to the point to where we're seeing improvement. So I think that we need to just build on that improvement, instead of starting, you know, instead of recreating the wheel, let's just build on it and work between the Special Ed and the Curriculum Department. And I believe that, Curriculum, and I believe that we will be able to see a big improvement within our school system.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Mr. DiMilio, what is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
So I read through, so we have a strategic operating plan, which I think clearly helps to change the reality of what's going on in Norwalk Public Schools, closing the achievement gap, and what my colleagues have said. I'm from this town, and everybody in this room knows, and I'll get to a story real quickly, but we definitely have an issue with the perception of our schools. And I think, I met with Mayor Rilling about a year ago, talking about how Norwalk High School looks like an asylum, and what could we do to change it? And he said, "I'm an alum, let's figure it out." Like, we need to, there's things that my colleagues that are in the education business know how to do and fix, and really get down there and fix some of the problems. But I also think we have a perception problem. This, this school system is phenomenal. We all know that. And anyone who's been around some of these other smaller towns says, "Hey, I'm from Norwalk." And they go, "Ooh, yeah, okay, you're sending your kids to that school." I want to change that and get the perception, change the perception of Norwalk Public Schools. And if it's, if it's by giving what we talked about as far as re-facing Norwalk High, really get there and change the branding of our schools and get that message out there. And as it relates to, to Special Ed and what Shirley said, yeah, I think we have to, we have to go out there. But, but people know, if we have, if we have buildings that look good and places where people want to go, coupled with programs like Special Ed that are second to none, they'll solve a lot of our problems and get us on the road where we need to go.
Thank you, Mr. DiMilio. Ms. Meyer Mitchell, what is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
My top priority would be making sure that we meet every student where they are, wherever they are on their road to achievement. And that is going to be, as Shirley said, promoting our turnaround of special education, which I have been fighting for, for the last six years as a sped parent. It's also going to mean supporting children who are, you know, we've, we've read in the hour about the income gap in Norwalk and how that affects the achievement gap. That means that we need to focus on providing services, wraparound social services and supports to children who are maybe not getting those supports at home. We need to address the digital divide, the fact that 30% of our children do not have access to a computer or the internet at home. So we need to solve that by giving them access, whether it's sending computers home and finding a company to sponsor free or reduced Wi-Fi. We need to make sure that we're engaging our children. Sometimes when we're so focused on our testing scores, we lose sight of engaging their minds and their imagination. We need to create a generation of critical thinkers and problem solvers who can create the next fact set, the next dado, that's going to carry Norwalk into the next generation to support all of us in our retirement. So I would, as I said, really focus on the parts of the curriculum where there are opportunities to grow their problem solving. And I would hope for support from the administration, and I think that we have that. So I'm looking forward to digging into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. Mr. Cullen, what is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
I think one of the things we have to do is take a, take a look at, capacity is one, is one of the problems. I understand there's, if we have an increased number of school-aged kids in the town and have to provide for them, which we will have to provide for them, we have to do some building. But from the ground up, bricks and mortar building may not be the fastest way or the most efficient way in the short to medium term of adding more capacity. So we've got to take a look at the capacity of the school system as it exists right now. If every seat in every school, in every school were filled, how many, how many kids would that cover? And then allocate the resources so we can answer that, answer as much demand as we can before undertaking capital budgets that are, put an additional burden on the town.
May I have your mic?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to point out to Mr. Cullen that we are currently at 110% capacity in our schools. We are overcrowded. There's no question about that. We've done a study. We have projections. It's only going to get worse. We cannot, as some people have suggested, slow our roll on capital building. It is imperative. We neglected capital concerns during the recession, and we're paying for that now. I'm not saying we have to spend, spend, spend. I'm saying let's make a plan, not just for the next five years, but the next 20 years. Thank you.
Mr. Kimmel, what is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
All right, let me go back to the Tier Two and Tier Three intervention and try to explain how I think it relates to special education. First of all, let me say that I taught in elementary school in Washington Heights area of Manhattan for 25 years, and have also been the chair of the Common Council's Finance Committee. And here's why that's pertinent. Two years ago, I found myself in this room at a discussion with the Board of Education and Dr. Adamaskew on the Board of Ed's budget, and I got into an exchange with, with our superintendent when he was, when he explained why they were asking for money for Tier Two interventions. Now, that's the basic kind of intervention that any child in most schools around the country has been getting for many, many years. And he indicated to me, "Well, we really don't have much of anything of Tier Two. We don't have really any Tier Two interventions going on." My response was to that was, as a former teacher, total disbelief and said, "That's impossible. That's like giving those students a free ticket to Special Ed." He did not disagree. If a child is behind for any reason, interventions need to take place. Quite often, the reasons for the child being behind have nothing to do with what's going in the classroom. They could be very complicated, but they have to be addressed one way or the other. These interventions are critically important. Now, it's Tier Two intervention, the basic intervention that goes on in the classroom when a child needs a little bit more help than the classroom teacher can provide. We're beginning to move towards Tier Three interventions after school and during the summer, which are critically important also, if we're going to prevent those very same students from losing ground over the summer, and that's been documented rather thoroughly. We've got to do something to close the, what they call the summer gap. The bottom line is academic achievement requires us to focus on a variety of specifics. We've got to deal with these interventions. I think it will reduce the cost of education and allow children to, to move through the school system in a much happier, much more progressive way. So I will still focus on those interventions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Mosby, would you like to use your 30-second comment? Go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say that currently we do have, I'm in agreement with you. Currently, we have the Tier Two intervention of Math 180 and Read 180, and then we have some other schools that have initiated and put other programs in place, like Nathan Hill, that has the Teach to One program, and West Rock is basically working with their own program with Compensate Learning. I think that if we can just build on those as well, then we should be able to see some improvement. So I, yes, I, yes, I agree.
Thank you. Mrs. Lamieux, the same question. What is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
So I was saying to Tom before we started that I'm so happy and inspired to be running alongside so many people with whom I agree with on so many things. I think, like Shirley and Barbara, I agree that Special Ed is a huge priority, and like Mark, I agree that we have a perception problem. And I think that one of our biggest issues is that we have a perception program, program, problem, not only externally, but internally, that throughout the district and in the different schools, and even in the same school among different segments of the population, that we're competing for resources and that we are trying to get something for one group of students at the expense of another group of students. And so I think increasing parity throughout the district at all the different schools, you know, Rotan offers different languages than West Rock, for example. That's one silly little example. And increasing a sense of cooperation and collaboration among and between all the schools would be one of my biggest priorities to start with. I think that we have so much talent in the district that we could use a lot of that talent to do in-house professional development and, and really reach out and see what interventions are working at a certain school or who has a particular talent for, you know, any specialty, and use the resources that we have together, because I think that what benefits special education children, or English language learners, or children in AT, actually benefits every child. If you have teachers and administrators and parents who are in the mindset of individuating, that that benefits the whole school community. And I think that that would improve our perception problem externally and internally, and also address the individual needs of the different children that we have.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamieux. Now, Mr. Donahue, what is your top priority in terms of school improvement, and how would you achieve it?
I think it's very interesting that I get to go last, because the top priority would be just to do what I've been doing for the last, however many minutes that was, listening. We have a tremendous amount of problems. We have everybody who wants to be heard. My first thought would be to listen to everybody, set a timeline, set an agenda, see what money we have that we can use to address it, prioritize those issues and those initiatives. There are difference, there's a difference between initiatives and priorities. I have a lot of initiatives, but we have priorities that we have to work out, we have to line up, we have to see what money we have and how we can address them. Then we can go through those initiatives, see who can help fund it, underfunded or overfunded or paid for it, whatever you want to call it. And then we can, we stand to be a better Board of Ed. With all due respect, I'm sitting here, I have no experience. Most of us don't. Shirley, you do. Bruce, you do. Tom, you have years of experience previously. We have to listen to the people that are out there. I look back out to the crowd here, and whenever we talk- I look back out to the crowd here, and whenever we talk, everybody's head starts nodding. So you've hit, we've hit all of your issues. We need to listen to you. That would be my first priority. Set the agenda, set the timeline, and then drive to the end. It's just a giant project.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Anyone else like to weigh in on this question? So now we're going to move to audience questions. I have several. Thank you, audience, for your participation. Starting with table number two with Ms. Meyer Mitchell, and this is actually a good segue to leave off with what Mr. Donahue just said, because this is a question from students, and the question is, how will you work with high school student representatives to include their voice in policy and decisions?
So it's really interesting. I recently met a Board of Education member from Cottona, New York, and they have a very interesting structure. They have a member of the student body on their Board of Ed. Imagine how civil our executive session would be if we had a student present. So that's something I might consider proposing. I do a lot of listening. I've been doing that for several years now, and I, as a Girl Scout leader for years and as a Boy Scout Chartered Organization representative, I've spent a lot of time with kids. So, you know, the issues that they're concerned about, I'm hearing and I would bring to the table, but I'd also invite them to come and speak to us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. Mr. Cullen, same question. How will you work with high school student representatives to include their voice in policy and decisions?
I think that a great deal of educational policy that affects us is made on the floor of the state legislature and that the local boards carry it out. Now, there's a question of how much room is left in there for flexibility and contributions by students. I'd welcome them to sit in and attend and pose questions and suggest answers to anything they want to talk about, but recognize that the structure is not particularly receptive to that notion, at least so far.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Kimmel, how will you work with high school student representatives to include their voice in policy and decisions?
It's an interesting question because as soon as it was asked, I began thinking about the students I have in the Social and Behavioral Science Department at Norwalk Community College, which, many of whom are only just out of high school or out of high school for a year or two. And the one thing we talk most about, which I find interesting, because they're far more adept at this than I am, how technology can be used, not just for the dissemination of knowledge and gathering information, but for all kinds of purposes. And we've had these fascinating discussions about, let's say, the role of traditional textbooks, when you have the answer to almost any question you can conceive of in your front pocket. So we've got to begin, as teachers and administrators and staff in our schools, if we could listen to a lot of the high school students, talk about learning, how they learn in the 21st century and where they think the world is coming, I think we'd be, where the world is going in the way of technology and education in general, I think we'd be quite surprised, really surprised. And I have to admit it, some of their arguments are extremely cogent about, why should I memorize this when I have it in my front pocket? And this is interesting stuff, okay? And there's no question they can't answer. There's other issues that we need to listen to with high school students, some that have to do with the interactions of kids in school, particularly bullying, the various kinds of bullying and that kind of thing. They would, to come in, for them to have a seat at the table, as was suggested, I think it's a great idea because we do things often without thinking how the very objects of what we're doing are relating to it until possibly it's too late when we decide something won't work. Perhaps if we brought folks in earlier, it's almost like a focus group, they may say, you kidding me, this is not going to work, you've got to do it this way. And it would be something to think about. So number one, when it comes to technology, I believe they probably have a lot to offer to us that we can use and that we should take advantage of that. And in general, when it comes to behavior of not only students but of their teachers, we need to listen and hear what they're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Would anyone else like to weigh in on this with a comment? Mrs. Lamiu?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Lamiu first and then Mr. Cullen?
I would say, it's funny, Tom and I were just talking about this issue before we started, and I think it's a wonderful idea to engage students in the process of all of the governance that we're doing at every level, not just high school students but middle school students and elementary school students, because giving a child a sense of agency over what's happening to them is one of the most powerful tools that you have to engage them with their own learning and their own process.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen, and then Mr. D'Amelio, then Ms. Mosby, and then Mr. Donahue.
There's been some concern that the smartphones and info tech and all that stuff is serving to, not to enhance the student body's general coagency, it's to diminish it a little bit. Carrying the stuff around in your front pocket is not the same as carrying it around in your head. That's it. Oh, here's a question for everybody to think about, not necessarily to answer right away. Would a student member of the Board of Education have a vote?
Ms. Mosby, 30 seconds.
Yes, I just want to say that I've listened and I've encouraged students to come to the public comments section to address their concerns, and they have come, came, and I expect them to keep doing that. I think that once we encourage them to come and have their voice heard out there, that's the most important part. Our part is that we need to listen to them when they do come to the mic and make sure that we do something to implement some of the things that they might want changed.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Mr. D'Amelio, 30 seconds.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I was involved in the, on the School Governance Council at Norwalk High, and we did have two student members there, and these guys were two of the brightest young men I've ever met, and they really had a lot of great things to say. And I would look to expand that and maybe have the two School Governance Council members of McMahon and Norwalk High almost be a liaison between some of the other student body and funnel that stuff up to the Board of Ed.
Thank you, Mrs. Lamiu. Did you want to weigh in on this?
I did already.
Oh, you did already, I'm sorry. Anyone else? Oh, this is, Mr. Donahue, I'm sorry.
You can't see me, I'm underneath.
You know what, I would like to move this podium further down if someone can help me, because I can't see.
Thank you. There's a few strong men in the house.
Yeah, it's hard to stand up.
Hey. I can see, I'm working.
You're okay?
Yeah, just can't see me.
I can't see you.
That's all right. So I'd just like to echo Sarah and I were talking about it, it was so cool that we were saying that. I think one of the things, if we're going to do that, we need to do that in advance. We have to have a sort of, again, my point about a project, a timeline. If we're going to ask these kids to be able, and Mark, you could probably chime in on this as well later on, but if we're going to ask these kids to sit on the board, give them enough time to pull some information, get some background information, maybe not just two kids, but maybe get kids from various economic backgrounds, cultural backgrounds to get them. It was 30 seconds.
It was 30 seconds? Okay, thank you.
Really? Oh, wow.
Maybe because of the interruption, I apologize for moving this podium. Okay, next audience question, starting with table number three here, Mrs. Lamiu. How do you plan to engage teachers and other school staff, parentheses, aides, to implement the district's goals?
I'm going to take a page out of your book and say, by listening, by listening and talking. No, it's true, though. I'm currently serving on governance at West Rock, and I served on governance at Columbus. My two younger children are at Columbus now, and I have good standing relationships with faculty and staff and administration at both of those schools, and I've also volunteered at Tracy. And I feel comfortable going around and asking and listening and saying, okay, these are our initiatives, this is what we're trying to do, tell me your thoughts about that, tell me what's working for you, tell me what's not working for you, and coalescing that information and moving forward with it. Can you remind me, just read the question to me again?
How do you plan to engage teachers and other school staff, such as aides, to implement the district's goals?
I wanted to make sure I wasn't veering too far off the topic of the question. Really, that's it. I think I, on governance, reached out to parents and teachers on other governance councils to see what are issues across the district and what are issues that are specific to unique schools. I don't know that I can say any more than that, talk and listen and implement. That's what I would do.
Thank you. First, we're going to have Mr. Donahue answer the question, and then we'll do the comments. So, Mr. Donahue, same question. How do you plan to engage teachers and other school staff, like aides, to implement the district's goals?
Well, I would have to agree with Sarah. We both said this going forward. I think the first thing is we have to listen to the teachers, listen to the aides, listen to any of the support staff, take those concerns, issues, lectures, experience, and prioritize those on the project list, as I was telling you about, that I would consider it, and then take it to our chairman and to the Board of Ed and say, this is what we're hearing. How do we, how do we address those issues, given the dollars, given the plan, given the two-year, three-year, five-year term that we think that it might have to take? And take the top three from some of those concerns. We can't do them all, but we can pick off a couple and make those the priority this year, and we make the other ones the priority next year, but go back and check and see, did we address those issues, those concerns and those priorities, and then move forward. So I think it's an experience thing. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Now, Mr. Kimmel, a comment?
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with the premise of the question. I'm not sure it's the role of the Board of Education members to come in and do observations and that kind of thing. I know it is, it is important for us to listen, to take back what we hear and make sure we have it done, but we have an entire infrastructure, administrative infrastructure, where we hire and pay people to do exactly what that question is being asked. We're finding there is no coordination in the schools, that they're not on task, they're not following the goals. I think that's not their, that's not an issue. For us to deal directly with them, it's an issue for us to deal with the administration. Why aren't the principals and the subject area directors doing their jobs?
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Mr. Donahue, you would like to comment?
I have to agree with you, Bruce, especially being from Pennsylvania and New Jersey, there we go. But I would have to agree because I think you're seeing right there, Bruce and Shirley have experience, and we have to go back and listen to that experience and see how we can use it better. So I thank you for that, and I think that if we go forward, we can take that experience and make it worth it for our kids and our town.
Mr. D'Amelio, comment?
Yeah, I disagree. I mean, I get it where we have this big administrative staff, but sometimes we have to hear things directly from, we just talked two seconds ago about hearing things directly from the kids, right? I think the Board of Ed, as I've read, insulates themselves a little too much. I would love to have an outreach to the teachers, love to have an outreach to the kids, and I know we only have a certain amount of time, but I think it's important not to get it second or third hand. I want to know what's going on. We already have an awesome PTOC that I think we could funnel this information through. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this question? Mrs. Lamiu and then Mr. Cullen?
Just to clarify, because I don't think I ever said my thesis statement of what I was commenting on before, I think the more agency people feel over the things that affect them, the more positively they're able to participate in the processes that you're asking them to participate in. And so I think giving teachers and staff and aides a sense of agency and participation in whatever initiatives we have, and in the current ones, will really increase positive progress on those initiatives.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen and then Ms. Meyer Mitchell?
I was very disappointed to run into somebody who was a Norwalk native, went through the school system, works in the local area, and is not registered to vote, and I couldn't persuade her to change her position. And I think that a lot of the comments here have left out a substantial cohort, and that is parents and taxpayers, as a group to listen to and be open to their comments, criticisms, concerns, what have you. Yeah, that's.
Ms. Meyer Mitchell?
Thank you. I have been talking to teachers since the summer to try and discover what their considerations are, and some of the things I'm hearing, I agree with Bruce, that, you know, the Board sets the policy and we expect the staff to execute it. However, I think as we're approving policy, we need to make sure that it has been planned down to the detail, that we're not approving just a broad swath of an idea, but that we know exactly how it's going to fall out. Let me give you an example. We switched, okay, I won't give you an example.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? Now, okay, going to table number one with Ms. Mosby. The next audience question is, how would you ensure protections and advocacy for LGBT students in the system?
Thank you. I would, right now, we're presently working on a policy at this time, and I work closely with CAE, that's the Connecticut Association of Board of Education. I attend their meetings just to make sure that we are aligned with the state mandates and aligned with all other school districts within Connecticut. I would sit there and we're talking now about implementing this policy into one of our policies, but then I would hopefully like to see it into a bigger policy at the end. And if we follow that and implement the policy in place, then we can sit here and start monitoring it and make sure that if we have to make any adjustments, then we need to make the adjustment. But first, we'll start off with the policy to put in place, and then we have to educate everyone with the policy on how to go about handling situations in the school. That's the main, the first most important thing is setting the policy and then educating people to follow the policy.
Thank you. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yeah, I agree with Shirley. Actually, one of the meetings, the meetings I went to this year was a policy meeting in relation to Title IX and how we handle transgender, and I thought it was, I think we have to keep on top of it, and I think it would work through. Heidi's not here, but I know she's a head of the Policy Committee, and we want to stay right as far as the laws that are in place, and we also want to be compassionate and be a forward-thinking city, and I would do everything in my power to uphold the law, but also to be a good person and compassionate to people of any sexual persuasion or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this question? Moving to the next audience question with the table number two, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. How will you implement and ensure transparency, accountability, communication and collaboration within the Board of Ed and in the district at all levels?
Okay.
I can repeat it, we can break.
No, I've got it, I've got it. I know who wrote the question. This has been a subject very near and dear to my heart in the six years that my children have been in the Norwalk Public Schools. I first joined the PTOC when my children were in kindergarten. Thank you, Akeisha, for your leadership. And I did a parent's survey, district-wide, sent it out, 150 pages thick, turned it into the administration, nada. And that was my first experience with understanding that we weren't really experiencing excellent communication between the community and the administration and the Board of Ed. So I know this was a hot topic two years ago in the election, and everybody said, oh, yes, we're going to make sure that communication is. So we've hired more people to communicate, but I think we have to think about how we're communicating. We don't want to just spin. We want to, as everybody here has agreed, we want to listen and digest and implement. We can't just hear what people are saying and say, oh, no, no, that's not right, our way is the right way. That's not going to move us forward. We have to hear the criticism. Criticism is an access for transformation. It's not just a complaint, it's the opportunity for us to do better. So I guess I would agree with Shirley that encouraging people to come to the Board of Ed meetings, to write the Board of Ed, to publish op-eds, to come on the Norwalk Parents' for Education page that I founded, that has created a forum for people to discuss issues within the schools, and of course, to reach out directly to the staff. They're the bottom line. It's an organic whole, the teachers, the administration, the parents, the students, we're all working together for the same goal.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. Mr. Cullen, how will you implement and ensure transparency, accountability, communication and collaboration within the Board of Ed and in the district at all levels?
Gee, what are we paying the superintendent and all those administrators for, you know? Except to press this stuff down through the ranks, you know? I think it's a, the late lamented Milton Friedman said way back in 1955 that the problem with education is government school. problem with education is, is government schools. You know? Hearing some of the anecdotes that come out of colleges these days, sometimes I think that the, the problem with education is schools, generally. They are looking for a lot of different ways to educate people from K to 12 and beyond for decent careers and a decent way of life, and to maybe appreciate the, the relationship, subtle and not so subtle, between music and mathematics, okay? To read books that were written and published before 1990 on the summer reading lists. And, you know, if you, if you put an emphasis on things like that, you're going to get some improvements. And pay attention in the back of your head, like I said before, about the structure of the school system itself. It's a state-run, state-operated monopoly. The history of monopolies is that there's never been, look at OPEC. Anybody worried about OPEC anymore? No? No hands, huh? Okay. They were very powerful back in the 1970s. Not anymore. Okay? No monopoly has gone unbroken up over a long period of time, not even one run by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Kimmel, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I got it. Look, let me put it this way, the Norwalk, Norwalk schools are in the midst of a rather rapid transformation, and I think for the most part, for the better. When you're moving ahead with a variety of reforms at a relatively fast pace, you have to be very careful. There's two, I, I, in my mind, sometimes I, I think about two types of change. There's disruptive change, it's like a bull in a china shop change, let's push it through, we don't have time, and then there's a more collaborative, slower approach. You've got to find a middle ground. You can't leave people in your wake as you move ahead, or your initiatives will not be carried out. People will complain they didn't know, they haven't heard of this. So, so my concern is, number one, you have to, you have to move quickly. There are too many things that haven't been done that need to be done, and it's unfair to the children to not move as fast as you can so that they get what they deserve under the law and what's ethically they should be getting. But on the other hand, you have to move in a way so that everybody is on board, or at least aware of what is coming down the pipe. There's various ways to do that, but communication has to take up a lot of time. I can say, the last couple of years compared to what it was for many years before, the Board of Ed and the central office has come a long, long ways, a long ways. It's, there's still room for much improvement. But I do, I do, I'm, I am of the belief that whenever you're making a major change, you've got to bring in those stakeholders that are going to be directly impacted on that. Secondly, I think, I don't know if the Board of Ed does this, but it's very important, the council goes through it every two years, you have to have a session with Board of, with FOI officials from Hartford. You can ask them all the questions you want, you can lay, they lay down the law. I'll be honest with you, sometimes I read in the papers about all this stuff that's going on with the Board of Ed, and I see this email and that email, and I'm thinking to myself, this is interesting, but why on earth are they doing it via emails? There's some, there's some FOI issues involved here, once you do communicate by emails. You have to, I'm not saying you can't do it, you have to be very careful.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this? Mr. D'Amelio?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I guess the theme here, right, is first, we're, we're not being transparent with, with the kids, we're not letting the teachers know what's going on, and now a parent, what I'm assuming to be a parent group says, saying we're not transparent enough. So, I get it that there's an administration, that administrative people that are supposed to be doing this, but it, to me, it seems like it's not working. So, I would say, I've been to some of these Board of Ed meetings, and I, I guarantee you, if I'm, if I'm sitting in that chair, I'm spending that one or two hours listening, and maybe just the comments at the end are not, are not it. Maybe we should get off our phones and actually listen to the people and our constituents.
Anyone else? Mrs. Lamiu?
There is actually professional development available and much study done about the science of active listening and how to implement it and how to transform a culture by using particular skills, and I, if I were elected, I would certainly encourage people to avail themselves of that body of study, and, yeah, there's science out there.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? Okay, moving to the next audience question with table number three, Mrs. Lamiu, we begin with you. Do you feel enough has been done by the Board to address the crack report?
I think I might have to buy a vowel. Will you tell me what the crack report is?
The crack report is, been done over the last, what, 10 years on special education, on how to improve special education. It started, if someone could correct me, 2003 was the first crack report? Does anyone know?
2005.
2005, and then it was revisited?
And then 2008.
And then 2008?
2015.
And then 2015, thank you.
Okay, so, the question is, it's speaking to special education.
Special education.
I would say, I don't know the specifics of the crack report or how we line up with the data and the metrics in it, but the, I have a background in special education. My brother Brendan has Williams Syndrome, which is a constellation of cognitive and physical symptoms, and I have developed programming for children and adults on the autism spectrum, and so, special education is an issue that's very dear to my heart and my experience, and the sense that I have from parents and aides and teachers in the district is that we could be doing much better, but also that there is some optimism as we've hired a new director of special education services in the district, and that now is a moment when hopefully some positive change can really start to move forward. So, speaking to the question of if the district or if the Board of Ed has done enough, I would say that it seems that progress is slowly being made, and hopefully more progress will be made, and I would like to be part of that progress.
Thank you. Mr. Donaher, do you feel enough has been done by the Board to address the crack report?
I'd like to say the first thing I would probably do on that report is take away all the acronyms, or at least publish them so everybody knows exactly what they are.
It's the Capital Regional Education Council that was hired to do this report.
Well, you got one on me on that one. I, I have to be honest with you, I don't know what that report is. I'm not familiar with it. My neighbors on my street and my brother and sister are both, all have sped kids, special education kids. So, I, I listened to them, and I would have to agree with Sarah. I would have to read the report, I'd have to see where that fits with the objectives of, of the Board or of the Superintendent, and, and try to evaluate, and how do we prioritize that? Because we're hearing more and more that these folks need help, and, and they certainly are entitled to that help, and they, they, we have to address that need. So, I have to agree with Sarah. I think I would just read it and see how we prioritize it, and then listen some more to those folks and see how we can advocate for them, whether it be locally, statewide, federally, what do we do?
Thank you. Okay, so, on comments, Ms. Meyer Mitchell, I have this as your third, just so you know, and then Mr. Kimmel, after Ms. Meyer Mitchell, this will be your second.
Thank you. As a sped parent, I have read the crack report, and I think, just to answer the question, which I don't think we ever really did here, we are not there yet, but we are making strides. We are working towards compliance, but I know from my friends in the special education community that we're not there yet, and we have to be cognizant that as we move towards creating programs here in Norwalk that are stellar, I hope, that's what I'd like to be part of, that, okay, as, this time thing.
I don't know, when is it, when, when do we start? When I start talking? Oh, okay. In 2007, Cambridge Education did a quality review of Norwalk Public Schools, and we were, and our special ed was in such disarray that they demanded that we hire outside consultants to look at it. We had one, then two, and then three reports. The, the issues confronting the city were so immense that we really were stymied, did not know what to do. Two years ago, Superintendent Adamowski met with members of the council and Mayor Rilling and came up with a, a three-year turnaround plan for special ed, which is just the beginning. We're in the midst of that plan right now, and it's a big deal, because where we were in the past was really disgraceful and violation of the law.
Mr. Cullen, this is your third as well? Comment?
In, in, in the vast universe of, of American public schools, is there, is there any jurisdiction that's been successful in dealing with these problems, and how do they operate, and where are they, and do we know, is there a way to find out about them outside, extra the state of Connecticut and extra the local area?
Thank you. Okay, next question, going to table number one, Ms. Mosby. This also, we're, have quite a few audience questions, so we're still getting through them. There appears to be a significant disconnect between public perception of Norwalk schools and teacher-administration perception. Why is this? And what could be done to bridge this gap?
I, I believe that if, to bridge the gap, first of all, we need to be able to work together collaboratively and, and bring everyone to the table, not only to listen, but to, and to embrace ideals and all, and everything that goes with that. The reception is that we, we've had some rough roads, and, and that's, that's normal, and that's expected, but if we're able to listen, have people at the table talk about what they want, and then implement some of the things that are being said out there, that we can show where we're giving an olive leaf or something, where we're trying to pull everyone in, a collaborative style with working with people and having them at the table is what I've, I believe, I believe in inclusiveness, and teachers are the backbone of our children. We need them in order to educate our kids, and their input is extremely valuable, and I think that we need to sit here and have them at the table, listen to them, implement some of the things that are said, because they are the ones that are right there besides the parents, are on the front lines with these kids. The parents get them the rest of the time, the teachers have a certain number of hours during the day, and those are the two important components, and as Board members or whoever, we need to take their input and listen to, to what's being said out there and then move together. But at this point, until we're able to do that, the perception is going to always be that there's a disconnect between everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Mr. D'Amelio?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah, it's a long one. There appears to be a significant disconnect between public perception of Norwalk schools and teacher-administration perception. Why is this, and what can be done to bridge the gap?
Are you implying that one is, that the one perception is positive or one perception is, perception is negative, or?
I'm not implying anything I'm reading from the audience question. It's how you perceive it.
So, let, let's just say, whatever, perception is reality, right? So, the, if there's, if there's a teacher perception that is, that is negative, and a parent's or, or administrative perception is negative, I think as a, as a Board of Education, we have to know what the perception is out there, what everybody's thinking, and, and I think we have to, to echo the sentiment of, of a lot of my colleagues here, I think we need to, to listen, but if, if the teachers have a certain perception, I want to know about it, and I want to see what we can do as, as a group to, to improve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. Would anyone else like to weigh in on this question? No? Okay, next question to table number two, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. How do you feel about the lack of minority teachers, and how will you work to improve it?
So, there's a lot of research. We are a minority and majority district. We're at 63% minorities. There's a lot of research that shows that having a minority teacher really transforms the experience for a minority student. They can model, they see somebody to aspire to. So, I would say it's incredibly important. I have heard from some people that it can be challenging to recruit minority teachers to teach here for a variety of reasons, but one of them is the price of our housing. So, as a private citizen, I've been advocating for, you know, perhaps in Washington Village, some of the less-than-market-rate housing could be earmarked for teachers, firefighters, police. Not everything can be solved on the Board of Ed. Some of it is us being citizens in our community and facilitating that. The other part of it is making sure that the administration is being open to that, that it's a priority, but we always want the people with the best qualifications teaching our children, and we hope that it reflects our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen, how do you feel about the lack of minority teachers, and how will you work to improve it?
It's a little hard to, to get away from the, the racial aspect of the question, but if you want to, if you want some kind of quota-type balance in there, recruit, recruit, recruit is the, is part of the answer, and for the, for the rates of pay that are available to newly hired schoolteachers, which, when you get the settlement of a union contract, you know, the distribution always goes higher to the senior teachers, you know, and that doesn't, that kind of question doesn't affect them, but if you're trying to recruit quality minority schoolteachers, that, that would have to be addressed first, and beyond that, see what you get.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Kimmel?
Thank you. For years on the Common Council, we had the same question related to how we hire firefighters and how we would attract more African-American and Hispanic firefighters. For years, it seemed though, we can't do anything, there's all of these issues. We, when we looked at it carefully, the fired, our, our various city departments, the mayor's office and the council, we came up with a very simple solution. We looked at the rubric that was being used, how it was being used, how it was affecting different groups, and a little, a few tweaks in the rubric made a big difference. So, that's the first thing you got to look at, the detailed way in which we hire people. Are there any flaws in it that will exclude folks that we're not even aware of? You got to be very, very careful. How we balance the different, the different items that we look for when we're doing interviews. I served under a superintendent on the Board of Ed between 2005 and 2009, and I always felt that some folks in, in the administration in Norwalk, they had a blind spot regarding this issue. There were certain hard and fast criteria that they had in mind when they were hiring folks, and on the one hand, they thought these criteria were absolutes, you couldn't, you couldn't tweak them, you couldn't adjust them. On the other hand, our student performance was really poor, so something was going, something was wrong here, and I think part of it had to do with the quality of our teaching staff in general, the supervision they received, and also the ethnic makeup of the staff. What I would, what I would suggest is, we need to see how we're advertising, where we're advertising. We got to look into the housing issue. We live in possibly the richest county, one of the richest counties in the country, if not the world. It's tough to find housing, as everyone knows. We have our, we are looking in, the mayor's looking into what we call 35, 65 housing, that's folks making 65,000 and under, which would include first-year teachers. That's important to understand. Right now, okay, first-year teachers couldn't qualify under existing Connecticut affordable housing laws for most areas in Norwalk. This is tough nut to crack. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Mr. Donaher, you wanted to comment?
I think one of the things I'd like to say is that one of the things that we're, we're talking about is recruiting, the question becomes retention. We're going to, if we, and I do like the idea of the housing, I, I think that we've logged, Sarah, or Barbara, we've also talked about policemen and firemen, because I find that most of them don't live in our town, so they don't have a real stake in the game. But my point is, what will we do after we give them a house, or we, not give them, but help offset that price? What will we do to keep training them and teaching them and be, making them better? So, we have to, if we're going to do that, let's just make sure we do it all the way and do it right. We want better teachers, we want minority teachers, put that down.
Okay.
But we have to, we have to look at them long-term, all right? And believe me, I know that, because my wife obviously is one.
Thank you. Mr. Kimmel, you'd like to comment?
Yeah, retention is a national issue, and a lot of municipalities and unions have looked at it in a way where they look at the salary schedule and they restructure it. So, salaries may be a little bit, the, the increases are early on in the contract instead of later on in the contract. It makes it easier for younger folks who are down further on a salary scale to stay. I know they did that in New York when I was there, when they really upped the starting salaries, and they had the first, what we call longevity, after, after four years and then six years. So, people weren't leaving after three or four years because they just couldn't afford it. We made it financially worthwhile for them to stay, and I think that's one thing we could look at.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Would anyone else like to comment on this question? Mr. Cullen, this is your last comment? This is your fourth 30-second comment?
Uh-oh.
Just letting you know.
My, my other granddaughter says that, you know, she was about three. Uh-oh. This thing seems to have grown in scope for the, the range of problems that it's designed to solve or intends to solve or wants to. to solve or intends to solve or wants to solve, whether it has the capacity to solve them or not, from basic K to 12 education. And the expansion is not a wonderful idea, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Anyone else on this question? No, going to the next audience question with table number three, Mrs. Lamiu. How do you feel about the school governance councils? Would you like to see their roles increase or decrease? Are there any changes you feel should be made?
I'm glad that this is a question that I'm getting first. I've had the pleasure and the honor of serving on two governance councils at Columbus and at Westrocks and I will say that I think it's very important that there is, and this is echoing something I said before, that there's parity across the district in how it's implemented. I think that it's implemented very differently in different schools and some governance councils feel like they have a lot of agency and a lot of power to make decisions and some governance councils feel very hamstrung. And I think it's important that if this is a model that we are going with, that it is a model that we are using to its best effect. And I think, you know, there have been some trainings for all the different governance councils to attend together and it's, in my experience, we could have more effective training and we could also have more of a way to, to check in an outcome-informed way how the governance councils are working, how the SGCs themselves feel that they are functioning. And again, in my experience, it's varied, it's very different at different schools. So I wouldn't say that I would want to increase or decrease the power of the SGCs. What I would say is that I would want them to maximize their effectiveness and also to make sure that we have parity and equality in how they are functioning at each school.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, how do you feel about the school governance councils? Would you like to see their roles increase or decrease or are there any changes you feel should be made?
I was going to say no. I actually think, I think the governance councils are working. I think to Sarah's point, and I would have to agree with you, we need to look around and see what's going on and make sure there is a level playing field because I think, as we've said along the way, there are probably things that are being done in our area, in our town and in the tri-state area that would help us. We are, we are not a small city economically. I want to look over at Mayor Rilling and say, give me some numbers here, Harry, but I got nothing. But our numbers are about the same with some of the smaller, some of the towns in our area. Let's check, look, take a look at those towns, where we stack up, how we stack up, what we can do, what's working, what isn't working. Why reinvent the wheel? Just go to them and say, hey, you paid that money, thanks, we'll take it. And that saves us cash. So I think I would echo a lot of what Sarah said, take a look around, see what's doing, see what changes we can make and how that fits in with our plan long-term.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Would anyone else like to comment on this question? Mr. D'Amelio, this is your fourth 30-second comment.
That was three.
Question, I have you ask question three, question four, question six, and this would be question 10.
How many more questions are there, just so I could...
The questions can keep coming.
We're trying to pace ourselves.
Hey, I just want to say, I thought that, I was lucky enough to serve on the Norwalk High School School Governance Council and we had two amazing women that really ran it. I mean, we met with Mayor Rilling, we met with Dr. Adamowski, but it's up to the members to really drive that home. So I want to make sure that if we're going to continue to do this, that everyone's on an even playing field and they all get the same attention. And also, how do we make sure that we're protecting that people are showing up and doing all the things they need to do? And I think there just needs to be some safeguards there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? So moving to the next question with table number one, Ms. Mosby. Should local funding to schools be reduced or left as is in the future? What would be your priorities for funding and what would you eliminate or greatly reduce?
You can't, sorry.
It's Ms. Mosby's turn.
As a person who's fiscally responsible, I believe that if there's any cuts or anything that is necessary for funding being reduced, that we try our best to stay away from classroom and students and don't touch the programs. With that being said, we would have to really look into all the excess things that are out there, as they call it, the excess fat or whatever, that needs to be trimmed and that's what we should focus on. As far as, we need to make sure that we hold the money and make sure that we hold people accountable for the money. We got to make sure that it is being allocated to where it needs to go and the right resources are being used with this money because it is taxpayer money and they need to make sure that we are spending it correctly and wisely and we have to be diligently with that. So like I said, if, you know, we had to cut back fiscally on something and the local state budget, local budget that's sometimes driven by the state budget and their responses, we need to definitely make sure that classrooms and programs and students are not touched and that, and any other thing we need to really look at and determine what needs to be touched.
Thank you, Ms. Mosby. Mr. D'Amelio.
So as it relates to, it doesn't look like we're getting any more money. So in business, what do you do? You either try to increase revenues, but I don't think we're in a position to cut anything. So I'll get back to my earlier comment, which is just about being efficient. I mean, anything, you guys look at, when you're looking at your personal bills, you look at the cable bill, you say, what could I, what could I afford to be more efficient with? Maybe it's not cutting. I would look at the biggest line items, things that we can make change with and not look to, not look to cut, but look to do things more responsibly and be more efficient. I think that's the only way we'll, with a $200 million budget, there's got to be some inefficiencies that we could, that we could work on without cutting anything.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. Mr. Kimmel? This is your last comment.
We work in a fiscal framework governed by the ECS formula. For many years, we tried to find a balance that enabled us to have enough money for the city side and the educational side. We found that we were just treading water and that's unacceptable in the 21st century. We have, we have a moral obligation to the children in our schools to provide them the very best education that we can. And I know cost is something we always have to consider, but then again, there is an ethical issue here and I consider an ethical imperative. We've got the responsibility to educate these children. They deserve it and we've got to find a way to provide them sufficient funds.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Next question, table number two, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. How do you, as a board member, plan to help the district bring outside funding to our schools and could you give some examples of effective public-private partnerships that might benefit our students?
I'm so glad you asked. In my career in arts management, first starting my own opera company and then working for Carnegie Hall, I was specialized in development. So one of the things I did at the board retreat in June was sit down with Ralph Lucizzi and discuss, where are we with looking for private funds? If we are not getting an increase in state funding and we've gotten a wonderful generous increase in our local operating budget and capital budget, what's the third prong? And for me, that's, that's private funding. So obviously, we have a great partnership with the Delio Foundation, they have deep pockets, we can expand that. But we have new and wonderful companies growing here in Norwalk, FactSet, Dato, as I mentioned before, Xerox. There are a lot of opportunities for us to create partnerships in areas where these companies are needing workers who are ready. The jobs of the future are going to be in STEM. We have to, we have to realize that and we are not preparing our kids. If we can pitch that to these STEM companies who need qualified workers, I think that they would be willing to invest in us because they need them here and they need them ready. So that would be what I would probably focus on.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. Mr. Cullen? Do you need me to repeat?
Yeah, we probably, no, I don't need you to have the question repeated. We probably need a change of government at the top of the state so that, to make it much more hospitable for private investment, for private, for private and publicly held companies to stay, come into Connecticut and to stay in Connecticut without necessarily special tax deals that apply only to them, okay? And then you'll put them in a position to make, to be willing partners in public-private partnerships where they might not otherwise be today. If you have a, you know, the recent GE Exodus is an example of not how to do things.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Kimmel, do you need the question repeated?
No, I don't think so.
You're good.
Yeah, I agree with what Ms. Barbara Meyer Mitchell, I got it, Barbara Meyer Mitchell said generally, we've got to, we've got, partnerships are good, we've got to see what we can, what's out there, what we can avail ourselves of. Coordinated endeavors, however we do that. I would like to figure out and, or find out if we are somehow missing grants, if we're not up to speed on what's out there. We have to really make sure both the city and the board have people on board whose job is primary to ensure that we don't miss these kind of grants when they come up. That's extremely important. But having said all that, I got to point out, it's however important it is for our district, private outside funding, I'm not, I'm not going to knock it, but we are in a hole and the private sector is not going to make up the hole that exists because of the ECS formula. And we're talking with that maybe losing between 20 and 25 million a year that should come to us. So this, the issue of private funding on the one hand is important and we should always look to it, but I would not look at it as a way to, to solve our fiscal problems, problems that have been created by the ECS formula. We would never be able to achieve enough in the way of grants, long-term grants, it just wouldn't work. So we have to figure out a way with the state, working with the state, working with our state legislators, how we go about doing that. I understand there'll be some minor tweaks in the grant for the next fiscal, not this fiscal year, but for the next fiscal year. I don't have the details yet on what that will mean, but I hear it's a step in the right direction. But once we do have the details, we have to see how far, how much more we have to push so that Norwalk students get, what's due to them, what other towns and municipalities have been getting in Connecticut. This is truly an unfair situation. We are backed into a corner and we're going to have to solve this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Mr. Donahue, comment?
I'd like to thank Barbara for promoting my idea of using other internal companies in the city for our infrastructure. I think one of the other solutions we have to do is promote. For instance, we have a CCNA class, we have a Cisco networking class at the high school that the kids take. At the end of that class, which is a full-year class, they take a test. The test is pass or fail. If they pass that test, that's a certification that they keep with them for life. In the technology world, that will increase their starting salary by $15,000 to $20,000, guaranteed. We should be promoting that for other classes that might fit that bill. Secondly, I know...
Little more. He got jipped last time, give him five more seconds.
Thank you. Last, one of the last companies I worked for donated $20,000 worth of networking hardware to that CCNA class. They now have a state-of-the-art network in the school that they can destroy and rebuild in a matter of minutes. That's the stuff we should be promoting. We should be asking us, these companies to help these classes and these kids on all levels.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Would anyone else like to comment on this question? Well, that brings us to our closing remarks. Thank you for all the questions that you've answered. We're going to start with Ms. Mosby, one-minute closing.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the co-sponsor volunteers and the community members who are here tonight participating in this forum, as well as my fellow candidates. As an incumbent, I have served six years on the Board of Education. I am passionate about serving the Norwalk community and its children. I'm a strong advocate for open communication, transparency and accountability. My concern for children, parental involvement and community engagement gives me a unique insight into our diverse community. My collaborative bipartisan inclusive style will allow me to successfully work with key stakeholders. As a proven community leader and strong supporter for all children, parents, I advocate for parents to take an active role in their children's education. I believe everyone has a voice and it should be heard. In conclusion, I will be inclusive, will listen and put your children first. I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. D'Amelio, you're closing.
I'm just going to freestyle this. So here's the deal, I love Norwalk and, you know, people have asked me all the time, why would I run? And, you know, there's a lot of pressure on all of us. I mean, this has been, this has been tough, put a subject to our families to all this thing, but I really think that I have something to offer and I showed that when I was on the, when I was president of the Parents Club at Norwalk High School, when I was on the School Governance Council. And I think we need a diverse group of people on this, going forward in the Board of Ed and I think my skill set is different. I think I'm going to bring a different perspective and, you know, not that the only reason to get on the board is to love this city, but I do and like everyone out there, but I think I'm the right person for the job and I appreciate your support on November 7th and thanks for having us. And I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and all the moderators and everybody helping. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell.
I believe in excellence in education for every child, all 11,531 of them. I believe that I can be a team player to work in a bipartisan manner as I have for the last several years. I think I can build bridges between some of the communities that aren't working well together. I have time, which is something that is very precious, but I have, because I don't work, I'm a homemaker and I'm a mother, I have time to have conversations, to read research, to look at best practices, to go and do site visits. This is a precious commodity that I'm offering to the city of Norwalk and I hope that you will choose to support me and accept that from me. I want to work very hard to make sure that we have parity across the district, that every school is getting equal resources and equal opportunities, that we're spreading pilot programs. We keep saying we have a pilot program and then we're going to spread it, and then it doesn't spread. We have to make sure that we are, that every child is getting the same opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer Mitchell. Mr. Cullen?
Well, I've lived here for 40 years and served 17 years on the Board of Education up to now. As to budgetary problems, school-by-school financial accountability may, may help out with savings that we want to make. As far as the school governance councils are concerned, there may be variations in their, in their performance from school to school, but to the extent that they enhance communication between teachers and parents and the kids who are the subject of all this, including letting kids in on teacher-parent conferences, which I saw in the journal a week or so ago, that's the kind of thing we have to bear in mind and remember, it's the structure of the school system and then its conduct and then its performance. That's what counts. We may need more institutional diversification to satisfy everybody's wants and needs.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. Mr. Kimmel?
For the 10th time, you know, I've had the privilege to chair the Common Council's Finance Committee for eight years and I've always tried to work closely with the Board of Ed. And lately, the last few years it seems, I've been spending more time on educational issues than any other issue, set of issues. And I started thinking, you know, I have a passion for education, a background in it, I like it, maybe I ought to switch and run for the Board of Ed. You know, I've always thought that the future of Norwalk depends first and foremost on the quality of its schools. We can talk about the mall, we can talk about the maritime aquarium, we can talk about a lot of things, but how our school goes will determine how Norwalk goes. The clincher for, the clincher for me to decide to run for the Board of Education was when I found out that I would be, that I would possibly be able to share a ticket with Heidi Keys, who could not make it here tonight, she had a commitment she could not get out of, but to share a ticket with Heidi Keys, Barbara Meyer Mitchell and Sarah Lamiu. They all have strong backgrounds and experience in education, as do I. And this is rarely that we find that in municipal politics where everyone has a background in the office they're seeking.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmel. Mrs. Lamiu?
I would like to thank all of you in the League of Women Voters for coming out and allowing us the chance to present our ideas and our platforms. I don't know if it's come up so far this evening, but I taught in New Haven for about seven years and it's another very diverse community with a lot of different stakeholders. And so I have a strong experience in working with the community, very diverse groups and building bridges between those groups so that we can all feel like a team that's collaborating together, a team that has a common goal. And for me, that goal is giving every single child in Norwalk the most robust possible educational opportunity so that they can have the most beautiful possible life that we can provide for them. we can provide for them. I've volunteered and served in three different schools in this district. I have a really global understanding of the district's issues and strengths and what we're all facing, and I hope for your support on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
So, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us and having me. The reason why I'm running is because I think, as I said earlier, the best way to solve a problem is to listen to it and take that experience and figure out what works and what doesn't work. I don't believe that Barbara and, and the other candidates, sorry, Sarah and Bruce, and are the perfect match. I think we have to have half and half. We have some voting, we have some conservatives, we have some liberals. I think we need to have a steady voice on both sides of the aisle. I also believe that my sons want to live here. They want to live here when they're finished school. My son is halfway through college. I want him to come back. I want to have him have a school and a district and a town that he is proud to come back to. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. In closing, I wanted to thank our candidates for coming here tonight, and the audience for being here and putting forward such great questions. The League, the sponsors, the students, and just one more plug on Election Day. If you'll bring a non-perishable food item for the food drive, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, everyone.[1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03][1788.03]